Men's meeting.
Charles.
Into the Zoom meeting.
Never know.
There's never know.
She chairs it.
My dog was not happy to go in.
I can see.
May nine thirty. I'll call. Thank you. I'll call our last standing committee of the whole meeting for the two thousand and twenty four calendar year to order. Attendance at the start of the meeting is one hundred percent with council jolly attending briefly. I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Thank you, Ken. Go ahead.
That December tenth, twenty twenty four agenda. Be adopted as presented.
Perfect. Call for the vote. That is unanimous. And then we had no appointments, so we'll go straight to the minutes. Does anyone have any errors or omissions or additions to November twelve? Not can I have a motion to adopt the minutes? Thank you, Mike.
That's the stand committee of the whole of November twelfth, twenty twenty four be adopted as presented.
Okay, call for the vote. That is unanimous. Okay, the long awaited, long awaited art theater operating model review that arose from. What was all about this? We did last term, last term. So I've got Elizabeth presenting. Is that right? Okay.
Sure is. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this update on the Arden Theater today. We'll be sharing what we've reviewed, how the work progressed, and how we are achieving the cost savings identified in the Ernst and Young report without changing the operating model. As part of the Arden Theater Operating Model Review, we conducted a comprehensive review to better understand the Arden Theater's role in our community. It's and its broader impact. This included exploring operating models, the role of the theater, comparing theater operations and cost recovery with our regional comparators, and planning next steps for sustainability. Initial work was guided by a steering committee with representation from across the organization and included our partner organization Arts and Heritage Foundation. This helped us ensure the review work aligned with diverse priorities and perspectives. Some of the operational efficiencies I'll discuss today were already underway before the EY review. The phase one and phase two recommendations provided an opportunity to validate this work and reinforce the importance of ongoing review. Because I don't often get to come to council to speak about the Arden, I'll also include some additional information on history and some of the impacts we're making in our community today. I'll also cover the EY recommendations and the work completed. I'll provide a financial overview looking at cost savings and revenue through key factors like inflation, salaries, and ticket fees, and then wrap up with conclusions, next steps, and an opportunity to ask questions. The Arden Theater opened in St. Albert Place in nineteen eighty three and was the first municipality owned, first municipal owned performing arts venue in the region. Last week on December second, it celebrated its forty first birthday. In twenty twenty three, the Arden Theater hosted three hundred and nine events with attendance exceeding seventy five thousand. Like other recreation amenities, the Arden Theater contributes to physical, mental, and social well being while fostering community pride. What sets it apart as a cultural hub are its unique benefits. It provides emotional enrichment. In other words, it gives you those warm, fuzzy goosebump moments. It brings a wide range of performances and programs that celebrate different cultures and perspectives, offering opportunities for people of all ages to learn and grow together. It fosters understanding and empathy by showcasing diverse experiences, helping audiences act in meaningful ways. We've heard council emphasize the importance of civic engagement and volunteerism, and we're proud to share the impact of volunteers at the Arden Theater. With eighty two volunteers contributing over forty five hundred hours annually, they're essential to making the theater run smoothly and feel welcoming. Volunteers help reduce our costs by covering roles that would otherwise require paid staff, which allows us to allocate resources elsewhere and keep subsidization down. They're the friendly faces audience see at events, enhancing experiences and promoting the theater in their networks. Programs like our technical theater production camps engage youth, and some of our current staff actually started as youth volunteers. Volunteers also train each other, fostering shared pride and ownership. Beyond their contribution to the theater, they also benefit by building skills, gaining confidence, and forming connections. For our senior and newcomer volunteers, we see the reduction of isolation and the creation of community adding to their lives. One of the highlights of my job is hearing stories about what the Arden Theater means to our community members. It leaves a lasting impression. The Arden brings people together, family, friends, and neighbors, and I often hear about how kids wide-eyed during school field trips or cheering on a sibling in a play later have the opportunity set on that same stage to return as confident adults, emerging artists, or even professionals, sharing the talent with the community that inspired them. I'm proud to be one of those kids. The Arden Theater's forecasted cost recovery for twenty twenty four is sixty nine percent, up from sixty percent in twenty twenty three, reflecting continued efforts to improve efficiency and revenue generation. Throughout today's presentation, I'll share examples of how other regional venues operate to highlight where the city of St. Albert stands on our cost recovery journey and to learn from their experiences. We're grateful to our regional venue partners for sharing their insights. It's important to note that comparing venues can at times be tricky. Each venue is unique, shaped by its community and its specific challenges and advantages. We have a close working relationship with these venues, and this isn't about critiquing them, but rather understanding their experience so we can improve and better serve St. Albert. Their lessons help us reflect on how we continue to grow and succeed. When compared to regional venues in twenty twenty three, Shell Theater in Fort Saskatchewan recovered fifty two percent, eight percent lower than the Arden Theater. Festival Place in Strathcona County recovered fifty eight percent, two percent lower than the Arden Theater. And McLab Center in Laduke recovered thirty seven percent of their expenses, which was twenty three percent lower than St. Albert. These figures show that the Arden Theater is performing above the regional average, highlighting the success of ongoing efforts to reduce costs and improve cost recovery. The phase one recommendation from Ernst and Young focused on upgrading the Arden Theater's ticketing system. The goal was to improve functionality and make operations more efficient by reducing manual tasks, eliminating unnecessary steps, and exploring new pricing strategies. They also suggested expanding the system to sell tickets for other city events in the future. Phase two looked at alternative operating models to access funding that municipalities typically can't access. However, St. Albert was already tapping into those same funds through partnerships with two charities and a nonprofit society, which reduced the need for a shift in operating model. This means we were already accessing the funds EY thought we couldn't.
Charities for this?
Friends of Arden Theater, Friends of Children's Festival, and Friends of St. Albert Children's Theater. In response to phase one of the EY review, we transitioned from Ticketmaster to Theater Manager in twenty twenty one. The new system has improved efficiency by reducing manual tasks and shadow processes. We continue to work with IT and corporate communications to make the system increasingly user-friendly. While the current system doesn't yet allow for ticket sales for other city events, we continue to review annually as a potential revenue opportunity. More details on cost savings and revenue gains from these changes will be shared later in the presentation. Phase two work included a review of operating models and compared Arden Theater's fiscal operations to the regional comparators. We found that the Arden Theater's cost recovery is higher than most regional venues, even with constraints on certain revenue streams like commercial catering and additional event hosting facilities. The EY report, as previously identified, suggested that the city could be, could realize savings through grant access that they were ineligible for. As noted, we already were accessing those funds. This meant cost savings wouldn't come from new grants and needed to come from operational efficiencies. The report also suggested savings by restructuring staff under an external organization to provide greater flexibility in scheduling. However, Arden staff contribute over five thousand hours annually to other city events and programs, while shifting to an external model might reduce salary costs. Should an outside agency pay less, it would increase costs for other city services. This review validated the current model's effectiveness. The city currently uses a city-owned and operated model for the Arden Theater. This model gives the city full control over operations, programming, and financial, financial decisions. One of the key advantages of this approach is stability and access, allowing the city to ensure the theater aligns with community priorities. We've also learned from other comparators that alternative models can lead to challenges, including multiple examples of regional municipalities having to unexpectedly assume control of venues, often taking on significant unplanned costs for maintenance and operations. While this model has proven successful, it does require an ongoing commitment to continuous improvement to ensure efficiencies, challenge the status quo, and adapt to changing community needs. A good example of a city-owned and operated model like the Arden is Fort Saskatchewan Shell Theater. Like us, Fort Saskatchewan covers all costs to ensure stable operations and programming. However, it's important to note that their cost recovery excludes certain expenses like custodial and some box office costs. Additionally, Shell Theater has forty more seats than the Arden, which means two thousand dollars more revenue per sold-out show on a fifty dollar ticket. Despite Shell Theater's advantages, the Arden Theater has consistently maintained a higher cost recovery with fewer seats and taking on more operational expenses. Partnership with an external organization. The city would still own the Arden Theater, but partner with an external group like a nonprofit or a private company to manage operations. There are advantages here. The external partner could directly access the same funding streams the city currently has to access through its friends organizations. It could reduce some of the immediate financial risk for the city by shifting those operational responsibilities. The disadvantages: the city would lose some control over programming and operations, which might affect city use, programming alignment with priorities, or access to subject matter expertise or equipment for other city programming. There are risks, including the potential for financial shortfalls or deferred maintenance that could fall back on the city at a later time. In the region, Laduke, Spruce Grove, and Strathcona County have all tried this model and eventually had to assume control of the venues due to those challenges mentioned, meaning around maintaining financial stability and operations. While these models have benefits, the examples show it's important to weigh the long-term risks with the short-term rewards. For many years, Festival Place in Strathcona County was operated under a city-owned, partner-operated model, where the county owned the venue, but a nonprofit managed operations. When the nonprofit could no longer sustain the venue financially, Strathcona County had to take back control, which led to unexpected costs. Like Shell Theater, Festival Place has additional revenue option opportunities such as onsite catering and multipurpose rooms for rent, which the Arden Theater doesn't have. The county also has a postponed budget motion under deliberation at this time to add an additional black box theater expansion to their venue. The McLab Center in Laduke faces additional challenge because it's co-located in a school. It's been managed by both an advisory committee and later a nonprofit organization, but both models struggled with financial sustainability, partly due to the limitations that come with shared spaces. The Arden Theater similarly has to work around events hosted throughout St. Albert Place and in downtown St. Albert to avoid disruptions and access considerations like those experienced during Rainmaker Rodeo Parade or Farmer's Market. From McLab Center, it's possible the shared space challenges impacted the venue's ability to generate revenue and program efficiently, making things unsustainable for the advisory committee and for the nonprofit. City-operated spaces are more readily able to accommodate for community access while maintaining financial sustainability. Contract to an arms-length agency. This model involves the city maintaining ownership of the theater, but outsourcing its operations to an external agency under contract. It offers programming risks taking resulting in less control over artistic programming. If the contracted agency faces challenges, the city would still bear the financial risk. The closest example to this outside of theater operations is the existing partnership agreement with Arts and Heritage Foundation to deliver programming and operate Musea Heritage Museum, Art Gallery of St. Albert, community and educational digital arts programming, and St. Albert Historic Riverlots and Brain Elevators. While not exactly arms-length, the operating models of the Fort McMurray Keanu College Theater and Camrose Park Cargill Theater demonstrate a close proximity when considering the operational partnerships between municipalities, post-secondary institutions, and nonprofits to support venue operations. In Fort McMurray, the Keanu College Theater operates within Keanu College. Their partnership with the college is crucial for their sixty three percent cost recovery in twenty twenty three. Similarly, in Camrose, the Cargill Theater is managed by a nonprofit society with funding from both the city of Camrose and the University of Alberta. Again, this collaboration boosts their cost recovery to sixty three percent in twenty twenty three. St. Albert's cost recovery is high amidst reasonable comparators. In exploring alternative operating models, we had informal discussions with outside arts organizations about taking on the Arden Theater. The feedback showed hesitation. Many organizations, even those already managing venues, felt adding another facility would be challenging without receiving a higher level of subsidization. Other organizations, while supportive of the arts, noted they lacked the performing arts expertise needed to operate a venue like the Arden, which they felt would then increase costs and reduce efficiency. These conversations helped us better understand the challenges of transferring operations of a venue of this kind to an external organization, especially around the need for specialized expertise and financial support. The lessons we learned were around the three regional municipalities that initially partnered with external organizations having to assume control due to those financial pressures and the inability to address preventive maintenance or capital needs. Many of the comparators also rely on additional revenue streams like catering and extra venue spaces to assist with their cost recovery. This review reinforced the value of current Arden Theater operations. Over the past few years, the Arden Theater has implemented several operational efficiencies that have reduced costs and streamlined operations, which is especially important given the inflationary pressures facing the art sector and live entertainment specifically. As noted earlier, we transitioned to an in-house ticketing system, saving about thirty five thousand dollars annually by eliminating third-party fees. We also streamlined staffing, reducing overtime by over eighty five percent and cutting full-time positions by one point five FTEs, saving an additional hundred and seventeen thousand dollars annually. LED lighting upgrades have further reduced our electrical costs. We've partnered with regional and provincial venues to block book performances, which helps us reduce artists' fees, marketing costs, and other expenses. Just as a note, in case you don't know what block booking is, it just means that we negotiate as a group with an artist and offer them very specific dates at very specific locations, so we get that value discount of bulk buying. This has allowed us to expand programming without inflating costs. Given the broader economic pressures and shifting demands on the art sector, we continue to focus on continuous improvement to streamline our operations and control costs. We also know that this is not an easy task for any arts organization right now and are proud of where we're at. A recent report from Stone Olsson shows that the art sector's recovery has shifted from a three-to-five-year recovery period to a ten-year rebuild post-pandemic. Since two thousand and nineteen, performing arts companies across the country have dropped by twenty five point nine percent, and promoters and festivals have decreased by eighteen point five percent. One of the most recent efficiencies realized within our operations was work with our Canadian Heritage Program Officer on consolidating grant applications for both Children's Festival and the Arden Theater programming. This saves us administration time, allows for more efficient reporting, and has actually led to an increase in funding from the federal government. The Arden Theater has increased revenue by adjusting ticketing fees, eliminating discounts on high-demand events, and expanding its program offerings. A key strategy has been the block booking, booking as previously discussed, allowing us to secure those top-tier artists at far better prices. These collaborations not only help us attract larger audiences, but also provide opportunities to reach new patrons. We've also worked closely with local art societies and nonprofits, helping us access additional funding and donations to reduce operational costs. These partnerships also offer advocacy, support, and collaborative opportunities that enhance programming, especially in the community. For example, the Friends of Arden Theater Society hosts emerging artists and participates in community initiatives like the Downtown Business Association. Cost recovery has steadily improved from fifty six percent in two thousand and sixteen to a forecasted sixty nine percent in twenty twenty four. Our research coordinator, Ms. Iklinski, who will be online to answer questions later, tells me it's actually going to be more like seventy percent, but she's being extremely cautious for this presentation, and I'm not supposed to tell you that. While twenty twenty and twenty twenty one were impacted by pandemic shutdowns, we'd also like to note that twenty twenty three did present us some challenges and did affect anticipated ticket sales. Factors such as market competition, changes in consumer habits due to inflation and reprioritization of discretionary funds, and the transition to a consolidated communication approach, which took time to refine, were all impacts. Based on learning from twenty twenty three, we made adjustments in twenty twenty four to improve the cost recovery. We secured those higher-demand artists for the special presentations, as mentioned earlier, and made them ineligible for discounts. We dove deeper into our audience surveys to better understand not only those attending city events, but those attending rental events and their needs, and refining our communication and marketing strategies to boost reach and engagement, including reintroducing a physical brochure this year. A significant achievement for Arden Theater operations to date has been managing expenses effectively despite inflationary pressures. Since two thousand and sixteen, annual expenses have not increased. Since two thousand and sixteen, annual expenses have not increased, even as inflation and salary adjustments for permanent staff and casual have added pressures to the budget. By two thousand and twenty-three, actual expenses are at four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars lower than they would have been if spending had continued at two thousand and sixteen levels with inflation. Our shared efforts have allowed us to focus on maintaining service quality and community access while mitigating financial impacts to the city. Arden Theater generates revenue from its shows, so some costs ebb and flow around the number of events produced and rental events hosted. Permanent salaries, however, are a constant, regardless of events hosted or tickets sold. You can see we've reduced our permanent salaries by a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars annually since two thousand and sixteen. When the City of St. Albert introduced its own ticketing system, revenues generated from ticketing fees increased substantially, offsetting what would have been service fees provided to an outside ticketing provider. Additional revenues were added to the two thousand and twenty-five budget to reflect this continued trend of increased ticket fee revenue. The current operating model has proven stable and is meeting our current community needs. By sticking with this model, we avoid the risks seen in nearby municipalities where nonprofits couldn't sustain operations, leading to those unexpected costs and transitions. We're committed to continually continuing operational improvements that focus on reducing expenses, increasing cost recovery, and helping us minimize financial surprises. Our partnership with nonprofits will continue to give us access to those grant funds that we, as a municipality, are ineligible for. In addition, Arden staff and equipment continue to contribute over five thousand hours annually to city programming and events. We have that opportunity to continue to leverage the expertise and resources of this team to help reduce costs and avoid impacts in other operational areas. Thank you, and I welcome any questions you may have. I'm joined today by Andrea Gammon, our cultural programming manager, Adam Turnbull, our cultural facilities and resources manager, and online, we are joined by Janice Iglinski, our community services research coordinator.
So, talk a little bit about the volunteers. I don't know how you track so many volunteers for Arden, but they are fabulous. They really are. I see the same ones all the time, too.
I have to give credit to Sarah Craft, our front-of-house coordinator. One of the things that Sarah has really taken into account is that when you volunteer, you want to feel like you actually are needed and that the work has value. And so there is an entire training program, including ongoing mentorship and testing that happens with all Arden Theater volunteers, and they each have to play a role in training other volunteers as it goes on. And we have volunteers that have taken on additional supervisory responsibilities, and they've built training manuals and they run orientations now. And that sense of 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 ownership that gets developed there means that they show up day in and day out to continue to contribute their time.
If it helps, you can pass on appreciation from myself. Oh, so they're feeling valued because they are valued. More of a broader, bigger question is, this arose, as you said, out of the Ernst and Young Report. Was that a valuable exercise for you to see what they had recommended and then do this work? I'm kind of guessing you probably would have eventually got around to this anyway, but did you find the whole process? It's good for council, I think, because we we did that, spent a bunch of money on that review and looking and searching, and now I think we have some comfort that these things are getting, taken care of and looked after. And we are looking for synergies and other experiences and comparables, all that stuff, which is good. And not a lot changed, except maybe the ticketing and just the understanding. So I don't know if you're getting my question, but was it valuable?
No, I think I think anytime you have an outside perspective, provide some feedback on examples of what has worked elsewhere or considerations or review, it gives that opportunity to have reflection. We have been talking for years about the potential of transitioning away from Ticketmaster, and so having that additional validation of absolutely, this is the time to start to make those moves, that was extremely valuable. I think, too, like when you're in the middle of the work, taking a step far enough back to really get that that bigger picture sometimes can be challenging. And although you're right, continuous improvement is part of our day-to-day work, getting others involved in the conversation isn't necessarily a part of that work. So to be able to do the initial review with representatives from departments across this organization and also include our partner organizations in that work, that was because of of the the level of expectation that came from the operating review.
That's awesome. Shelley's got lots, she says.
Amazing.
Thank you for the presentation, and I I frequent the Arden a lot, so. At a show the other night, it was mentioned, you know, the discount you were doing, the buy one, get one seat, you know, half price for this weekend kind of thing. But I purchased some tickets tickets earlier in the year, and then I wanted two more beside me. Well, there's three beside me, and you can't buy two, no matter how you try. And so I've asked the box office, when do they release those tickets? Okay? So I went on the other night, there was twenty-one seats that were blocked from purchase because there were seven different three-packs in the in the group, right? So you're doing a promotion to try and sell seats, but nobody can buy the seats was the issue unless you happen to have three people, right, that want to go to a show. So I know that I know the ticketing system, the theater manager, I guess you called it, is, you know, I mean, it it does help you. You want to fill the house, of course, but that glitchy really, really seems to block a lot of purchase, you know, for tickets, right? Because people just get frustrated and say, well, I'll just forget it. I won't buy any, you know, so.
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure around the specifics of your situation, although not having available inventory sounds like a really great problem to have, not for you necessarily, but for us, that we don't have the seats to accommodate how many people that you want to have sitting together. However, there is an email link and a phone number on the ticketing system. And our box office, it does function and reduce hours, but it is open between ten-thirty and two o'clock, Monday through Friday. And our box office people are happy to make changes.
Right. What I'm saying is if there's three seats together, it will not allow you to buy two because it will not allow you to leave one single seat. So you've got all these threes all throughout the theater.
Got you.
That, you know, traditionally people buy in couples or two or whatever, and I mean, there might be some singles, there might be some people that will buy one, like it's just silly that you can't buy those seats or just sitting there empty till I don't even know when you take that off the system.
I do have additional information because I'm thinking, I know that part of the ticketing system is around reducing single seats and reducing, sort of increasing the available seating that is out there for sale, so it does sort of force people into particular areas, but can you speak to that more?
That's something I will have to to go back and.
Twenty-one seats is quite a number, right, that you're saying, no, you can't buy unless you buy three?
Yeah, and there are times there are holds associated with our seating maps. Artists retain holds, sponsors retain holds. And like I said, that the ticketing system is meant to optimize where people are seated, so it won't give you options if it thinks that it would be leaving revenue on the table by selling that seat thing. Just one seat.
That's all that comes up, actually, on the side there. And I was told by staff that they can't override it as well.
You will look into it again.
That's one thing. And then when you do the the presenter series, like the brochure, and then a lot of your rental shows are not included in that brochure. So there's a lot of really great shows that you have that people kind of have to be going to back to the website to check, you know, what's coming up kind of thing. So I think that you could probably gain a little bit more from advertising those shows, whether it's, you know, by a cheaper means in a brochure or throwing them up on the website or whatever, because there's, those ones are missed, okay? And the the question I had is why, for the presenter in the St. Albert series, you have a host that comes out and you know, and talks to the crowd and whatever, why just for the St. Albert ones and not the rental ones?
Because those rental events, they pay us to use the theater in the way that they choose to use the theater. Whereas for the city events, we choose to have that host come out so we can talk about other upcoming events and programs, and it's an opportunity to talk to an audience that is already familiar with the Arden Theater about other things that will be happening at the Arden Theater.
Is there a cost for that host then?
They're a full-time employee.
And then on page twenty-two, it says, programming and reputational considerations. Administration already evaluates impact of performance selection on the city's reputation. Additionally, since the Arden Theater is part of a shared civic space, programming choices, including rental events may reflect on the city. So administration evaluates, how do you, how do you evaluate what's, what's someone you want to rent to and what's someone you don't want to rent to?
We do not evaluate rentals for their subject matters, which is also why we don't necessarily advertise for rentals, although we do post on our website. But we can share how we evaluate our city professional presentations. If you would like to speak to that, Ms. Gammon?
Sure. Yeah, so we're entirely in control of the programmer series, the ones that we curate ourselves. So our programmers are working with other presenters in the region. They are very much deliberately trying to put together, curate an entire season of diverse music, diverse perspectives, in order to address the interests of our residents, and also sometimes to encourage them to try something new, someone that they may not have seen before or heard before. There's some, you know, in some of our grant funding, we have to answer questions about the diversity of our programming and that we're representing all genres and different things like that. So all of those things go into consideration when they're programming their season.
So I described the word reputational, I don't really understand what that.
Well, oh, I I can speak to this. So, so there are performances where people swear or take off their clothes or act out fornication on stage. They would not be part of our professional series. It would not be crude or lewd. It would not be something that you walked away feeling judged or harmed for. Those were things that would come with reputational risks to the organization and to the city. Can you imagine the conversations that council might have to entertain?
Or lewd.
Would some of those shows go out?
I'll just throw it out. There are also criminal liabilities, right? Like, we would not knowingly rent a venue in any shape or form to someone who is going to espouse hate speech. Right? There are very clear lines, to be clear, right? That, I think, just sort of goes without saying. We not count it's any criminal behavior. The other part of that is, so. I don't think that's been an issue necessarily.
Just there was an example of.
The fire and ice was.
That was it, yeah.
Recent one, yeah. That was a political perspective and points, and that is freedom of speech.
We struggled with, we should do with that one, yeah.
We did, and we monitor the the event as we do all of our events. And we have conversations with our renters when they come into the venue about maintaining a respectful workplace, and some of that is about how they show up on the stage as well.
Okay, so administration team does that then? Okay, that's all my questions. Wes, you're up next.
Yep, thank you. Interesting segue. Acceptability and compliance. We have two spots for wheelchair.
We do.
So if we change that, bring it up to code, how much, like?
Millions of dollars. So the lift alone was over two million dollars when we did the the accessibility review and looked at initial designs for an accessible lift to address the slope and grade of the ramp, which is currently non-conforming. It was identified at that time. Should we do that work? We would be responsible for bringing the interior of the Arden Theater up to code, which would include wider spacing, the introduction of additional alleys, which would reduce our seating capacity significantly. And the last, the last interior renovation was several million dollars as well. It'd be a very costly project, and it would mean lower return afterwards because we would have less inventory to be able to sell.
I understood all of that. It's expensive to be accessible to our entire community, to be sure. I'm just, I'm just wondering what the path would be to that. So you've already got a plan in place, too? I like, I mean, there there was an accessibility review, and so you've got all of it.
Yeah, so the Arden Theater was included when St. Albert Place's accessibility review was completed, and and so that area was identified. We don't frequently, and Adam can speak to this more, like, we do have an aging, we do have an aging audience, and there are mobility issues. We do not receive a lot of additional feedback for additional wheelchair spots. There are specific presentations that we may see the use of both wheelchair spots, but not at all of our events.
If there's no wheelchair spots, they won't come, right?
They will, no. We do get phone calls for all sorts of other things.
I, it's, it's just interesting. We're supposed to be accessible to everybody. I get it that it's expensive, and I get it it'll cost. But the law is the law. Anyway, I'll leave it at that.
Counselor, I would just say that it's recognized, but there is only so much money to go around, right? It's a relative effort of prioritization. Right now, HVAC and wind goes, right, versus that, and so it is, it's a difficult decision we made if council directed us to do that. We shut down for a significant period of time to do the full-scale renovations, and something else would not get done.
Yeah, I appreciate all that.
Yeah, as long as.
Point is, is that's where we're supposed to be. And and money is not always the the end consideration. I don't, correct me if I'm wrong.
Who's answering that one? But I I guess.
But it is a consideration.
It is a consideration, I get it.
Expect if you, if you saw those two wheelchair spaces full all the time and people calling, say, I can't see the show because there's not enough, that's when you would come to council, but right now you're not seeing that. But I expect, as you said, with an aging population, it might be coming.
I forgot to commend you for the hearing system, too, since we're on the accessibility. That's great.
Again, another awesome example of what our partnership and relationship with our friends' organizations are. Because Friends of Art and Theater Society is who helped us bring that particular hearing assist system into the theaters, and it works off an app on your phone, so anyone can use it. It's pretty amazing. Wes?
Yeah, no, that's good. Thanks.
And you're up next.
Thanks.
I have no interesting segue off of that.
Well, you, yeah, you do, but I'm not going to let you say it.
I, like the others have spoken, I'm a huge fan of the Arden Theater. And I I guess some of the constraints, I guess, so there is a little bit of a segue. The constraints that you're working under are are starting to get large because of the age of the facility. I mean, and I know we've looked at other things, and you've identified several examples already. But I'm looking at the region, and I'm saying, okay, they've, obviously, when they were building, they 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 put out naming rights, abilities. I looked everywhere. What's, where did Arden get their name from?
It was a competition, and the winning name that was selected was the Arden with reference to Shakespeare. The Arden Forest.
Did not know that.
Did not know that either, but I, you know, you look at Shell Theater in in, and then you look at McLab, maybe named after a family that donated some dollars, but are we prohibited from looking at naming rights for the performing arts theater?
We're not prohibited at looking at naming rights for the venue. There are challenges with it being a historic resource. The building is, where is that signage going that gives that name recognition? Right now, they really, the only place that it can go is on the little signs out front. It's, it's not, it's, it's not a significant, like, place for that name recognition to happen. It is absolutely something where I'll sell my name truly if it'll help our organization get along. our organization get along as a sponsored by.
Administration looking at.
Interesting examples though, so Shell Theater.
Yeah.
Will be Shell Theater into perpetuity. They na- they named that venue one-time donation forever. Shell doesn't actually have to invest back into that venue. They choose to, but they don't have to. Um, and similarly, the McClellan uh, family did donate into the Luduk's venue, but they also do not have an ongoing relationship, um, but have a naming recognition into perpetuity.
So, so that's like, I mean, I imagine there would be maybe other challenges in the sense of it. You would, you know, the negotiated, you would wanna maybe maintain the Arden, but with a little asterix behind it. Again, I mean, Adrian knows that this is one of my bugaboos in relation to our signing that doesn't allow us to put digital signs uh, in front of our buildings. So Adrian. I know in relation to land use bylaw, uh, has that been modified or is that a bill?
Generally in place.
Still generally in place, and it's just. It's a, it's a good name for the actual facility, generally in place. The.
Standard yes.
Yeah, standard general. Um, I, I mean, I, I recognize that as one of the challenges. And I recognize the historical designation, because I mean, I know we keep coming up against that. And I don't know, I'm not necessarily saying that's a bad thing, but it is a restrictive element. So, you know, these other facilities have uh, banquet facilities, they have breakout rooms. They have now, what I hear, they're gonna have a black box theater opportunity. What can we do that doesn't cost? I mean, if we're gonna look at accessibility, uh, you know, you might as well say, what, is there an ongoing plan in relation to the facility, progress hall, the actual um, kind of components, you know, because like you've identified lighting, you've identified other things that you can do. Is there any ongoing business plan that is available or is in theory or in planning? Sorry, that was a long way of answering a question. I probably should have been able to be a little bit more concise on.
It's been a long time since a new facility has been part of our long-term vision. We have other cultural facilities that are sitting on the unfunded list. And we're very aware around uh, challenges for prioritization and also just addressing community need. Um, we do see that the city art space right now provides us an opportunity to have a more accessible venue. Should we be presenting something that we see a greater demand for those, those access components? And that is currently meeting the demand that we're aware of and the need that has been communicated to us in the community at this time.
Is a constraint with the reciprocal use agreement with the school system? Is that a constraint or is that a benefit? Is there pros and cons to that?
How so?
Well, I, it, so we have a reciprocal use agreement with the schools. Does that, is, do we get any, like, what's the benefit of that?
You know, so the schools can access our um, facility at a significantly reduced rate um, Monday through Friday during school hours. Uh, the benefit is all of those parents and all of those children that come through the venue that get to uh, have that experience of being on our big stage in a, you know, a big venue that's, that builds that sense of pride and that confidence and in ways that we could never sort of build if we only got to have these small moments of connection with them, if they were only coming to our events. And so that awareness that that creates and that, that sense of pride that it creates with our young people um, is a huge benefit.
There's a social benefit.
Absolutely.
It's like a recreational facility. It's a social benefit. Okay. Um, uh, do we have that same reverse with the new theater in Falcone? Can we access that?
So, so to your point, um, Crimson Summers um, is in, one of our board members on Friends of Children's Festival. Um, and also has been in conversations with both Fest- Festival and Art and Theater around whether there are opportunities for us to use Falcone Theater as an extension to Children's Festival, potentially providing programming for an older audience. Um, that maybe doesn't want to be right on the Children's Festival site, but still has that opportunity to, to be involved or, or have that um, that level of programming access. So we're having conversations around, right now, around what that venue use looks like from our presentation perspective.
Yeah, no, it, I, it seems to be a really, I mean, I, you know, ties in with the reciprocal use agreement potentially. So would take advantage of that. I don't think, oh, the Red Deer Memorial Center, was that included in your scan?
It wasn't, no.
But is there something unique or different in relation to that, or would that be similar?
So it operates a little bit more, um, a little bit more like an arena. Um, and it has, it does have a significant amount of subsidization. We didn't include it um, because it is so vastly different if we're looking at even trying to find the apples and oranges comparisons.
But, and then you use Keano and they run it. Red Deer Polytechnic has.
Yes, they have their own theater. We, they are not uh, uh, they don't have their own season that they present outside of their educational opportunities. It's education and re- uh, and rentals. Whereas Keano also does a performance series like we do.
Alright, well, thanks. That's all my questions right now anyways.
Anyone else?
Yeah, um, I'd just like to thank Councilor Broadhead for bringing up accessibility. And uh, I'm a strong believer in that. And we have a parking lot that I proposed to, to pay for accessibility reasons. But uh, uh, that's a different uh, story. Um, the, the question I had again goes back to the signing, the electronic signing. And uh, it, I think Adrian, you confirmed, we can't have it in front of the building. But couldn't we have electronic signing in the parking lot across the street? It, it still would give that advantage of having the rolling message, the advertising, the updating, um, all of, all of those things. And people, people know where the Arden is, but a sign over there would, would do that.
So I, and maybe Elizabeth can um, confirm or deny this. But uh, in the past, when I think we've looked into this, regardless of digital displays in the downtown, I think that transportation had looked at the location of signage, potential signage locations on St. Anne. And because of the curvature and because of the number of people, et cetera, they felt that there was a potential distracting element with the pedestrian element, which was a cause for them to say that it wouldn't be advised to put it there. And then uh, with respect to the building, obviously, there's the Douglas Cardinal kind of oversight on what, what does or doesn't go there. Um, so that was, to my recollection, where we last left it was that we had done some initial transportation analysis of where it could or couldn't go. And there wasn't a really great spot for it based on that potential distracting feature kind of aspect.
But we got rid of the crosswalk over on St. Thomas that that corner wouldn't free up and.
Yeah, I'd have to look, I'd have to talk to the transportation and.
So it just seemed we're really missing out on an opportunity there.
The preliminary review as uh, Mr. Slot uh, identified did say that the, the closest location would be down on uh, St. Thomas. Um, it still had lots of risks that would need to be mitigated. And there, it wasn't a confident could be placed there. The closest place where it was identified, probably um, there would be a suitable site was St. Albert Trepp.
My recollection as well, yeah. Yeah, that's. Set an off-site location that had more visibility, et cetera.
There's a go.
Yes, St. Albert Trepp.
Okay. It's frustrating.
People get sign flippers. Remember the kids that stand in the corner?
Yeah, the sound we get, the waving, uh.
Dancing.
The arm blow up.
Like performing, that's performing up.
Minus forty, yeah, for sure. I don't know, I just was hoping that there was a solution, because we talked about it so often that I, I don't know. Need, need to get away from talking and, and the solution somehow.
Okay, Natalie, and then Gina.
Thank you. So I hate flashing signs, so yay for keeping them away from beautiful buildings. Um, my, my question is about the, kind of the, the conclusion and next step. So that section of the report is pretty brief. And I'm just curious about what um, those ongoing service reviews and evaluation will, will look like. Like, is, is there anything in the books or is that just kind of normal uh, business type, type activities?
Yeah, so our team is uh, quarterly, has meetings. And there's also every other week, an Art and Theater team meeting where they do review budgets. They do review staff allocations. They do review what our forecasted um, cost recovery is. And then they make adjustments accordingly as we continue to like, look at those refinements. So that is baked right into how the Art and Theater team now operates and how their work continues. Um, we also have an annual review of our ticketing system. We're currently just doing an environmental scan of all of the venues in the area. What ticketing systems they're currently using to identify are there additional opportunities that we haven't been able to capitalize on yet? Um, and we know that we'll probably need to make a shift around our ticketing, either to continue with our existing system or with a new system within the next year, because our contract is coming to a close. Um, so those are sort of the, the two pieces around ongoing review. Um, we also are on the schedule for workforce planning. Um, so we know that uh, HR, when that time comes, will also be working with us through the Art and Theater operations, as well as the full department, to also provide that, that confirmation and validation around what our current workforce is that's supporting Art and Theater operations and looking at those, those process opportunities for a continued refinement of, of operations.
Wonderful, thank you. That's all I have. Um, it's a great report. Thank you.
Okay, Gina. Thank you. Um, so can you, the dynamic pricing, you explained it, but then I did not catch it. So can you just give an example of what your, how it works?
So dynamic pricing is just like uh, airplane tickets. So you'll see in all of our written materials, we say that the pricing starts at twenty-three dollars or twenty-five dollars. Um, should the tickets start to sell quickly, we have that opportunity to start to add a dollar or two dollar to the ticket prices. Um, it does take additional negotiation with artists um, around that willingness for their price to start to escalate. It's something that we are in continued conversations with when we have a shared artist, where we have done that block booking to make sure the other venues are potentially comfortable with the potential for us to start to escalate the price. Um, we've had a couple of sold-out shows that have sold out so fast that we weren't able to even have the conversation around, is this the time where we start boosting the price? An example would be Core Blend. It sold quick. Um, and again, like best, worst problem, that we didn't have time to, to, to escalate that price. But we've provided that room to give us flexibility to start to um, recognize that we do have some performances that maybe we don't expect to be as in high demand as they are. So we price it a little bit lower to be cautious. And then we can see what that uptake looks like and then respond accordingly.
Then the other thing, so you mentioned also about you did the bookings where you do it at specific dates?
Yes.
So what is, I, again.
How does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, so usually within the professional programming, and I'll get Andrea to sort of fill in if there's anything that I miss around us, is we would identify, you know, our season is going to include these types of performances. I saw this artist at a showcase, I want to bring Jan Arden back, whatever that looks like. Oh, Jan Arden wants this amount of money. There is no way that we as a single venue can afford that ask. But I have a good relationship with Camrose and Fort Saskatchewan and the Esplanade in Medicine Hat. I'm gonna see if they have three dates around a date that I have available. And then I'm gonna go back to Jan's agent and say, hey, we have these four dates available and we're willing to offer you this. And that's where it gets around those specific dates. And so whatever venue initiates that conversation is often the one that picks the, the anchor date that they know they can sell and they want that artist to be a part of. And then they have to negotiate with all the other venues to find those shared times that basically maximizes the time for the artist. So they're getting the most income in the shortest amount of effort and travel.
Interesting. That's a lot of work.
Yes, but lots of benefit.
Yeah, so the other, the one of the ones, the other ones you compared to, did they also get that grant from the federal government? Are they getting any grants at all, or are we the only one that have?
Yeah.
To get grants?
So um, Shell Theater does not have a friends organization that they're working with, so they do not have the grant. And the granting question is the Alberta Foundation for the Arts Grant, which actually pays a percentage based on the artists that you have already showcased and where they're from. So uh, they pay more money for Alberta artists. And then uh, they reduce the amount the further away they get from, from Alberta. Um, and so we're not talking a significant amount of money. For us, I think the Alberta Foundation for the Arts Grant last year was about forty thousand dollars.
Well, I mean, you mentioned.
Sorry, Instracote County has had access to it. Um, Luduk only just did the transition last few years. Um, I don't know if they're still getting access through a society or not.
You also mentioned like the three hundred thousand, there was a three hundred thousand here somewhere on these pages about the grants. And then, yeah, I'm like, I didn't miss it. Okay, good. And then um, you also said the federal government. So is there, are, do we know if the other guys are getting anything, like, anything else? Like, are, are any, are any of the other guys actually capitalizing on any of the grants?
I'm sure they are. The federal grant, the CAPF grant, Canadian Heritage Municipalities are eligible for. So I would think they would be silly not to apply for it. So imagine they are.
So looking at this, trying to figure out, like, we are at seventy percent recovery, which is still about four hundred fifty thousand dollars um, from the taxpayer. So if we're getting about three hundred thousand dollars, then we, if they aren't getting grants and we are, then we'd be matching about fifty-seven percent, but just for the three hundred thousand dollar grant that they are accessing. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, how much the grant is making a difference, I guess, and whether or not they were also getting it or not. But we don't know that really right now. We just know they could and they should. They may not be. Okay. Um, so the other thing, you said you're charging a fee right now, like a ticketing fee? So is it the same amount as Ticketmaster or is it like?
No, it's less.
Yeah, I would guess. Is it a lot? First of all, Ticketmaster, no problem charging fees for everyone. It was the most inconvenient convenience we had ever seen. Um, like, are we substantially less or like?
We, we are enough less that we felt we were taking some of, of the burden of that cost off of our users. We are still high enough that we get regular complaints about ticket fees.
The um, the other thing I was wondering, two, two things. So the sign thing, have we looked at putting a digital sign inside St. Albert Place? Because, I mean, like, because people go to the library, people go in to do whatever. And if we actually had a digital sign inside St. Albert Place that showcased the Art and Theater, that would also not have any safety concerns, because I'm, I think I just wrote another person. So um, just a thought, but that might be a way that we could also showcase it.
Are you thinking along the lines of like the digital signs at Service Place? Or are you thinking like the kiosk that used to be at the front entry of St. Albert Place?
Like you have in the mall?
Yeah.
Just like the mall, a TV.
You can use a TV. That's even cheaper. We go down in price all the time. So um, something just like that, where, you know, you're waiting. And you know, the thing is, people are waiting for like an hour for the library to open from twelve o'clock to one o'clock on Sundays. And they got nothing else to do, people. So, you know, just say, get a really attentive audience there that's patiently waiting for that library to open. Um, anyway, that might be a solution, just something we want to look into. The other thing I, have we done, like, I hear you're doing like no three tickets sale, like from, as we mentioned. Have you guys looked at doing like standby singles at fifty percent off of the day of the day before?
So one of the things that um, comes up quite often at uh, like Capacoa, which is the Canadian Arts Presentation Association and um, Alberta Arts Touring Alliance, or the showcases, is around um, rewarding audience members for buying tickets early, not rewarding them for waiting until the last minute, which is why dynamic pricing encourages you to buy early while the ticket is low. Whereas when you start discounting last-minute inventory, you start training people to wait for that last-minute inventory, which um, makes it more challenging to understand when you need to increase your marketing tactics, when you, to know how. when you, to know how many people you can expect to show up on that night. Instead, what we do is if there are seats remaining in sort of that last 48 hour period, we will provide offers to people who already are supporters of the Art and Theatre. So we will do BOGOs or discounted tickets through the Friends of Art and Theatre Society, or we will reach out to like audiences who come to a similar type of performance at the Art and Theatre with a specific offer for them so that they can be rewarded for having already been a patron of the theatre. But we're not encouraging those last minute walk up. We want people to know that they're at risk of not getting to see the performance if they don't buy their ticket as soon as they hear about the show.
Yeah, that is contradictory though, because you're blocking those three pack of seats until the last minute. So all those people that want to buy two seats can't buy a seat till the last minute.
Well, definitely, as mentioned earlier, we'll have to look into the algorithm that the ticketing system is currently using to help with those online sales. You're right. We wouldn't want to be restricting access to those seats. And it is something on the backend of how the ticketing system is currently interacting that we'll just have to do a review on.
Yeah. Like, I was just thinking, like, if you said singles only, like, it had to be only one seat. So if there was two or more, then it wouldn't be eligible. But if it was the day of and you're like, you want to sit by yourself?
Yes.
For 50% off or something or whatever, 25, I don't care what the number is. That might be a motivator. You're just like, you know what, I'm not doing anything anyway tonight. Yeah, that's just an idea. So it's not really encouraging people, but they literally have to be like the single seat. So if it doubles, it wouldn't be eligible. I just an idea. Yeah. So we'll see. You guys can look into whatever you like. I just know that when the Arden came 10 years before I was born, I remember distinctly. And this was just, you know, but like this, when they built this building, this was such a crowd jewel of just the draw. And I think that it was one of the most proud things that the San Albert built in 1983 was including that Arden Theatre and having such a spectacular facility at that time. Like, you know, San Albert was just a little wee bit of a town back then. And yet they built something that, but it's been like 30, 40 years, that 40 years. And yeah, that's, and we still are extremely proud of what we have. And it's been really held up, really held up.
The most phenomenal thing is attending conferences across this country. And artists, agents, managers all talk about the Art and Theatre and their first experience of being in the venue because it was such an innovative facility at a time where venues like it were not being constructed. It has, it has been a jewel that has sort of continued that reputation clear across this country. And it still has that reputation.
I really think it's actually helped San Albert's reputation in general, just as being like arts friendly and all of that. I mean, we built this when we were right across MacDuckie Dome, again, 10 years before I was born. But we were right across MacDuckie Dome, like, you know, and yet we built this facility. It was just phenomenal.
I remember you figuring this out.
Not well. Anyway, so thank you for what you guys have been doing. That's it. Thank you.
Any more questions? You guys are good?
Yeah.
All of you are good? All right. This was awesome. Good conversations. Anyone want to, there is no motion, right? No, there is no motion. This is just.
Make a motion for a 10 minute break, or a five minute break.
I might not accept that. Out of order. Thanks, guys. Yeah, this was really good. All right. At the request of Councilor Killig, we will take a 10 minute break. Let everybody rearrange your chairs. So it's 10:36, so quarter to second. The long awaited finance policy review. I feel like this was on agenda planning, but scheduled forever. So.
A long overdue.
How do you want to do this? Do you want to go one by one?
Um, we're kind of going to go, Stella and Stan are going to do an overview of the major changes. Yeah, we're going to stop at investments because the investment companies on, or investment advisors are online.
Yeah, so I think an email. So that's from.
CIBC.
CIBC. So is it Charette and James?
They're online.
Okay. So just for you guys, for your information council, we have the Senior Investment Advisor from CIBC and the First Vice President Portfolio Manager from CIBC online. But just to answer questions, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let's take it away. Who's going? Stella, you going first?
Sure. Yeah. Just introduce myself in case everybody knows me. Good morning. I'm Stella and I'm the Financial Operations Controller of APN Treasury. And today administration is presenting the review of financial council policies for the Standing Committee. Finance and Strategic Services is bringing updates to financial policies for committee review. We're bringing the following six policies for updates with larger changes to the investments one and the financial reserves. The four policies with the minor updates include cash management, operating and capital carryforwards and closed projects, municipal fees and charges, and taxation of vacant residential lands. In the next few slides, I will outline the changes to the above policies. Administration has updated the investment policy through our review and discussions with our financial advisors to adjust restrictions to ensure there's more diversification in certain investments while adding flexibility in others considering current and future market conditions. This will allow us to balance risks while still optimizing returns. Our policy is overall more restrictive than what is allowed for the Municipal Government Act. So for example, the MGA securities include GICs, bonds, debentures, trust certificates, bills, notes, and mortgages, leaseholds. We invest in the less risky ones and more common, like GICs, notes, and bonds. The city's investment policy focuses on three key principles. First is preserving capital. So we are safeguarding our principal with minimal risk. Second is maintaining liquidity for cash flow purposes. And third is optimizing our return on investment. The city portfolio split between city managed and custodian managed funds. The city managed funds are the short term investments and are managed in-house. And the custodian funds are longer term and are managed by our investment custodians, which are CIBC Woodgundy and BMO Woodmanestons Burns. We've made some minor changes like updating definitions and a more clarity and realigning responsibilities. These were included as an attachment to the AR. Major changes include the following. So under the service standards expectations, we updated terms for the city managed funds, which is our short term portfolio of mainly just term deposits. We increased the terms from up to three years to up to five years. So this allows us for the ability to lock in at a potentially higher interest rate if those longer term rates are more favorable while keeping in mind cash flow needs. Both schedules for city and custodian managed funds were updated to increase diversification so that risks are further reduced. This was done by adding total portfolio limits to provide more clarity on the maximums on the overall investment portfolio. We also increased the maximum investment percentages from 75% to 100% for securities and government of Canada, as these are very low risk. We reduce maximum investment percentages in provincial municipal governments to 50% and 20% respectively, to just ensure further diversification. We reduce maximum investment percentage per institution in the other categories to 50% from 75%. So that ensures more diversification as well. For Schedule Two, the custodian managed funds or funds managed by our portfolio managers, we made additional updates. One of our portfolio managers, as mentioned, CIBC are online with us today. We removed limitation of 30% maximum holdings in government securities. This will allow us for more flexibility investing other safe instruments like the big banks, but also optimizing our returns. Our portfolio managers will ensure diversification within their portfolios and abide by our investment policy and their industry guidelines. These are balanced with additional restrictions of adding a 15% maximum on a specific security within the long term portfolios. And we've also added a table to outline limits by DBRS ratings to further reduce risk to the portfolio as it ensures we purchase only highly rated instruments. With that, are there any, are there any questions for myself or the financial advisors? Before we move on to next policy?
Just have one question. Like you went on the credit ratings of municipal, federal and such, right? And the federal has the lower credit ratings than the provincial, do they not?
Federal, so Bank of Canada's safest.
Safest.
Yeah. And then provincial and municipal. Mostly governments are pretty really safe, but obviously the returns are not as well, are like not as good. So banks provide a better return and we've reduced the 30% minimum are on the government securities so that we can invest more in banks, which will still be really safe, but provide us a higher rate of return.
What's the difference in the return? Do you know exactly?
Now, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure, but.
Stella, I can jump in here just to add to that one. You're talking on average between a bank and a province of anywhere from 50 basis points to sometimes always up to about a full percentage point. So making sure that we have that right asset allocation and balance, while still ensuring diversification is the key. The key theme for everything that Stella just walked you guys through here is we're actually making it more robust, but shifting it to rather than just having a fixed percentage allocation, adding that credit rating table gives us a more dynamic creditworthiness rating to ensure that the people we're investing still have the best credit quality out there. And the credit quality between all the major banks and all the provinces are in one and the same. There's double A across all provinces and banks.
That's all I got.
Yeah. Go ahead. So what I'm hearing here is that we are trying to decrease the risk, but also increase the rate of return at the same time. Is that what I'm basically saying here? And I don't see any serious downsides to any of this at this point. Just that I, what I'm hearing is. Just that I, what I'm hearing is that of the rules that we put in place, we're limiting our abilities to actually generate the best revenue. And that the risks that we want to take are not really that risky. It's just that we want to be able to manage them.
My hearing, pretty conservative compared to the MGA and even with other municipalities, but we're just strengthening some diversification in some of the areas while adding flexibility from government bonds. We're kind of switching some over to like say bank bonds, giving us that more flexibility of certain, when certain ones go up and down, we can have more flexibility in which ones to invest in.
So in light with that too, the reserves that we have, are they being aggressive in these type of bonds or are they just sitting cash? Like we have so many of these reserves. So what are they being invested in this way too?
The interest bearing reserves are.
Okay, okay, that's us.
That's all I got?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? That was easy.
Makes sense.
Past exactly, so.
Will, will the interest rate, does the interest rate fall tomorrow?
Well, the updates?
What do we got? The interest rate's going to fall tomorrow.
If it falls, our dollar goes down more. You're already really struggling to see us, right?
So, oh, now we're going back to reserves. Okay.
Sorry to the CIBC guests. I was only joking.
Okay, so the next few slides outline the major changes to each schedule within that we are bringing forward. So schedule one, so this is the financial reserve highlights. So administration did a fiscal review of the city's reserve policy, in particular, the stabilization reserve, to ensure adherent to sound fiscal responsibility. To review best practices, administration reached out to various municipalities to understand reserve thresholds, funding sources and use of funds. Many commonalities did exist. Many municipalities require a minimum balance on their stabilization reserve to ensure enough funds are set aside to cover unanticipated emergent needs or disaster recovery. Many municipalities set a maximum balance tied to their operating revenues slash expenses. And no municipality had an annual budgeted transfer in their budget to their stabilization reserve. All were funded from year end operating surpluses. Based on common features of other municipalities and in, and in effort to ensure minimum funds are available for emergent needs or disaster recovery, administration is recommending a minimum balance of two percent of the current municipal operating budget be maintained. If the reserve is below the minimum balance, administration would make a recommendation that any year end surpluses be transferred to the stabilization reserve first to meet the minimum balance. Administration would advise council of motions would bring the balance below the minimum threshold. As of 2023, the operating budget is two hundred and fifty-four million. This will result in a minimum balance of approximately five million dollars. The minimum balance is also recommended as the provincial government now has a ninety-ten cost sharing for their disaster recovery program, requiring municipalities to fund ten percent in disaster relief, not covered by insurance. The disaster recovery program is not a guarantee and does not mean the city will receive funds when asking for assistance. Administration is also recommending increasing the ceiling to ten percent of the municipal operating budget. This would represent the maximum value and does not necessarily mean that there's an requirement to top up the reserve with the map to this maximum on an annual basis. Next slide. The next major update is to schedule oh seven, the safety enhancement reserve. So this is to include the approved budgeted transfer as a source of funding. Remove the application of ten percent of current near second quarter uncommitted balance for the next year's safety budget. As a budget, it's now set at a hundred and fifty thousand per year, provided that there is enough funds within the reserve. Any unused funds are uncommitted in reserve for future use. Slide. The next update is consolidate schedules. C two, major recreation lands and facility reserve and C five municipal land and facility reserves. So this is consolidated schedules and rename land and facilities. The current C two is only to be used for the purchase of or development of recreational land and facilities. And the current C five is only to be used for commercial slash non-recreational land and facilities. As a review of all capital projects are done annually and prioritized based on the approved capital prioritization matrix. Consolidating these two reserves will allow for better use of the funds to fund council priorities. Also, remove reference to citywide and neighborhood funds. These funds relate to capital contribution agreements that are no longer collected. Update source of funding for Parkland Fund to clarify compliance with the Municipal Government Act. An update reserve to non-interest bearing as the nature of the reserve is not bound by external requirements for interest allocation. Next slide please. Okay, so this next update starts to schedule C four, the lifecycle reserves. Update city playground fund to park and outdoor recreation amenities to reflect new name. Add new fund for heritage buildings. This is new and would require funding from the existing infrastructure reserve transfer. Although we have a building reserve, it does not include rehabilitation of heritage buildings when required. Remove donations, corporate investment and grants from source of funding as there are not a consistent source of funding. Remove reference to administration's policy, update interest bearing for all funds to ensure consistency. Schedule C seven, the energy efficiency. Remove year end transfer of energy savings from reserve as a source of funding. As a primary objective of energy initiatives is to mitigate future tax increases by offsetting operating budget. Operating budget pressures with potential savings applied directly to the tax base. Create a new fund within the reserve for the Clean Energy Improvement Program, CEIP. The fund is, this fund is required to track the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM, contribution for the loan loss provision as well as for interest earned on residential loans. It ensures coverage of potential loan defaults that supports the cities in meeting its interest obligations on its line of credit. Slide. Administration has also updated various reserves by removing the interest bearing component in several reserves as the nature of the reserve does not require interest allocation. Those reserves are risk management, schedule oh three. Children's festival, schedule oh five, internal financing, schedule C one. The result of this is less interest revenue that will be transferred to various reserves and will be recognized as revenue within the city's operations and help support the tax base. Excellent. So the next update is for CFS nineteen, taxation of vacant residential lands.
Just ask a question about the reserves.
Sure. Did you want to break now and then like, oh, sorry, talk about reserve policy and then?
Yeah, it was just a stabilization reserve. You did some comparables from other municipalities. A lot of them had a minimum balance of five percent and you guys are recommending two. Why not five?
Oh, well, we've had our maximum at three and a half percent to begin with. It's time to get up to this.
I threw the max. I just was wondering if the minimum should be even higher.
I think with, we have other reserves. Other municipalities don't have specific reserves such as like the RCMP. So I think the two percent for us, which gives us five billion is enough at this moment to.
Okay.
And I think it's something that we'll continue to review.
Going from their stabilization reserve from what we have other reserves for, that makes sense. Okay, that was my new question. Sure, everyone else had the same question.
I have questions back.
Well, it's on the reserve policy. Go ahead.
Okay, so yeah, so you said that we're taking out the the interest bearing and so, and then it's going to be used towards tax base? So it's still going to generate interest, but we're just not going to attribute it to it?
Right, so we still generate the same amount of interest. It's just where we're going to apply it, whether it's the reserve or to offset the tax base. So more of it would, so we, if it's approved, we don't know what the final allocation will be. But you know, that's where we bring forward a budget adjustment time.
Okay. Get that out later. The so the, the risk reserve, so there's a ceiling on it now as opposed to this principal amounts of ceiling, I guess. Is that actually any material difference or is it just this principle set at one to a hundred and twenty million or one point two million? So now it's a ceiling. So I'm just trying to figure what that meant.
Ceiling has just been updated. There's always been a ceiling, but it's just been updated to exclude any of that interest.
Okay.
Adjustments. Is it steam?
So the heritage buildings. We have something set aside for heritage buildings. How is this different than what we are already doing? So we also.
No good. Are we talking about the heritage?
A new fund for heritage buildings.
So this one is specific for buildings itself. If we're talking about the reserve, that's the heritage sites. That money is for for residents or people that want to, to designate a spot.
Right.
To be a heritage site. This is our hair, our own heritage sites.
So these are assets that we own.
We own, yeah.
You feel?
So that we don't currently have a life cycle.
So then when HF comes and says we want to fix X, Y, Z, they wouldn't come out of operating if we could come out of this reserve potentially.
I think depending on the nature of what they're asking for, it potentially could be a source.
Right, so that could actually help us offset some of the tax base as well because they come forward and ask for different. You know, they've got to paint something or things fall apart.
I think, I think we just have to be careful that it's not, that we're not counting maintenance, you know.
This team would probably be maintenance.
What would it, what would be an example of something that would be used then under that fund?
Like a replacement of a window or HVAC or it wouldn't be something like grass cutting.
No.
Yeah.
But like, I just look at like the exterior of the grain elevators has to be done. Like it's like in bad shit. It's not like the painting. It's like a complete overhaul. And that would be a larger expense. So would that fit into that then? Because it's a larger thing.
Yeah, that'd be part of the use for that.
The other thing was, so it's topping out ten percent and we're taking fifty million. So we're topping out twenty-five million dollars for stabilization now. Like it's like, this is an enormous jump. I am, is it because of the disaster component?
It's because the stabilization reserve is having additional requirements, especially considering that disaster. So we want to make sure that the ceiling's being adjusted accordingly.
What are we at right now? In the reserves? Yeah, she can be there.
About uncommitted was about five point eight million as of October thirty first. So and I, and I would argue that, I'm not argue, I would also add that. Oh, sorry. That the other municipalities have higher ceilings as well and higher operating budgets. So I think within the twenty-five billion, it's a amount that I think is reasonable for seeing up.
Really, right now, it's like, we can't touch it. Well, we can as soon as our surplus comes through a month and a half, but. Okay, the other question I had was the growth stabilization on page sixty-four. So the so I see here that we did have a, I remember putting it into policy. I didn't know what happened to it, but it was still here that the full impact of the new staff was to come out of the growth stabilization either this year or the following year. And now it's being recommended to be removed, but we weren't following this policy. So I'm just trying to figure out like the last budgets we looked at have not followed this policy. Of the, of the full cost of the staff person coming past three quarters, one year and one quarter the following year. I know we did it for a couple of years. But we, we didn't follow this policy. Do, but I've been only changed that.
Give us a minute to look at which section. So which section are you?
So the C seven or C six capital reserve growth stabilization.
I'd have to take that question offline just to keep the meeting going. We'll take that as an IR.
Yeah, I guess, because
We'll give it later.
Like I would, I would like to keep this in. So I'd like to do an amendment to keep this in. We can argue about it at the time of, but I just don't know how to word that, Marta, to say.
So page sixty-four?
Page sixty-four, it's removing
Of our package, right.
Less annual, annualization impact of prior years operating business cases. So this was specifically that the twenty-five percent that was not allocated the first year would be coming out allocated in the second year. I'm not sure how to word that. So we say keep in, Marta.
Okay, I'll work on a, if, if you don't mind, I'll work on drafting a motion first now to consider giving.
Yeah.
Yeah. Make that amendment so that we can take the
Yeah.
Pass as the.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so I'll just work on that. Okay.
And then we changed the portion from seventy percent to fifty-five percent. I just felt that was because that must have been some kind of typo because we were at fifty-five percent for growth stabilization.
It was a seventy thirty split until we did the, the infrastructure reserve, the one point five percent. And then council made a motion that a portion of it fifteen percent had to come out of the assessment growth revenue. So we were calculating the one point five percent, but then deduct off so that we're actually not charging the taxes, the whole one point five percent. Part of it is coming from the assessment here, fifteen percent.
I know, I did that one, that motion too. So, but so this is just really, but it was seventy, but if we just, we just, I feel this is a housekeeping move to seventy to fifty-five. It's not an actual reduction because we'd already made the changes. We just didn't reflect it in.
I think, I think where it is, is it's, it's in the budget and taxation grinding principles at fifty-five. It just didn't get updated in the course funding reserve.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah. The other question I had was with the policing reserve. So this came to light just with our discussions about the surplus, et cetera. So right now what we have, we have those vacancies that we just didn't have like for the ten people. I think it was a two point five. And then we had another one at the five hundred and twelve thousand. So what do we have for this reserve? Can we just understand what we have for the reserve for the, for the extra amount that we have? In going for policing. I'm just, that, that reserve seems to be a little confusing to me.
So the current reserve standard, you'll get the balance and that is for seven officers, right?
Eight officers. So we're saving, because, okay, the approved number is, I can't remember, but now is it seventy?
It's sixty-five still, but we're supposed to go up to seventy. Right, because we approved seventy-five.
We asked for.
So are we actually saving money though for those extra people that we're asking for but not approving? So is we're proving six, sixty-five or whatever, but then what are asking, what we say our ask is seventy. So are we actually still saving the money for those extra five people that we can approve, but are, they could show up?
That would be the intent of the reserve that if we were to receive what we actually asked for over above the budget, we withdraw from the reserve to fund those positions.
Because we're only budgeting for the sixty-five, we're asking for more and we're budgeting for the.
How much more are we taking each year to have those extra asks that we're not in the budget for? Like we're budgeting sixty-five, but are we actually withdrawing enough for seventy? And then putting the differences with reserve?
That's what would, that's would be the intent of that would be to draw, to transfer to the reserve how much we need for eight officers or eight staff.
So just to follow up on that, we're keeping the balance of the eight officers in the reserve. And we will only transfer into that reserve because if we, if it becomes under that eight, that amount for the eight officers. So every year we're only budgeting to that sixty-five. So we're not doing an annual fund if it's, if that reserve is sufficient. So that makes.
Putting money, what I'm seeing is we're putting money, well, can I visualize a pot? And so this is like the extra money for the extra officers not in the budget. And then if it doesn't, if with the budget, if the pot's full, then it just goes all past it and into the surplus. So how much are we now putting that in theory that are going, total amount that would be going into the pot that may be going into the surplus? How much is that? We needing to top up the reserve for the eight officers this year stand?
Right, so our current balance right now is one, approximately one point two million dollars. And then we would have to calculate what budget for eight officers is and then also then figure out the surplus from the contract plus how much we have to transfer. I understand.
So it sounds like we're still budgeting an extra one point five million because I'm just doing the math on how much the profit is. Still in twenty thousand.
A little bit more now. It's about two sixty-five.
Oh, dear. Okay, so it's, so what I'm hearing though is that like this, the exception of when we just did this increase, that this reserve was full. And so we're budgeting almost two million dollars. It's just continually just going right over to the surplus. Because it's, because our reserve is full. Right? Am I understanding this correctly?
So that's correct because we're budgeting so, we're asking. So, so that's correct because we're budgeting so we're asking for seventy five officers. We're only budgeting for sixty five. We've actually only been getting built for like sixty two or sixty three. So we've been under even what we've budgeted for. So that, that, that top up to the reserve is very small every year. We've never, I don't think we've ever had to use it. Because we've never had over, we've never been built over what we've budgeted for. So I think of that difference as being a vacancy allowance right between the sixty five and seventy five. That's why we're only budgeting for sixty five because we know there's going to be vacancies. And there has been more vacancies even than needs anticipated.
Keep in mind, you're only going to see that surplus between that sixty five and that sixty two and not the seventy. Five that we're asking. So we're only budgeting for the sixty five.
The reserve though is for, the reserves for if we go past sixty five.
Yes.
That what I'm trying to figure out is how much we're putting into that reserve every year.
Only the amount to top it up. If it's one point two million now and eight officers is now the new rate of pay makes it one point two five, we'd only be putting fifty thousand.
Into the reserve.
Into the reserve and the rest would flow to the city surplus.
That's what I'm asking. It's not how much we're putting into the reserve. How much are we billing taxpayers? We have billing taxpayers for the full five people. And then whatever does not go into the reserve goes into surplus.
The taxpayers are just being built for the sixty five that we're budgeting for, right? Like that's all, like that's all that's in the budget. So that's all that's in the tax requirement. Yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out what's going. So right now we were getting billed for sixty two. Trying to determine how much is going to the surplus versus what's going in the reserve. Is that what you're asking?
How much are we allocating every year to go towards the reserve? Regardless if there was no surplus or reserve, how much is, are we allocating? Out of operating budget to go towards this reserve?
Theoretically zero, right? We're budgeting for sixty five officers with the hope that we get at minimum sixty five officers. So we want to be at zero, like that's, that would be the intent. We're never planning for a surplus.
But with, but if we're putting money towards this every single year, I'm just, forgive me, I'm just confused.
The only thing that we're transferring when we do that annual review is just that. Is the reserve at that eight officers? And then we're calculating in that salary and seeing if there's just a shortage and it's usually just minor. And that's the surplus that then is going just to make sure we maintain that eight officers.
So right now. When we saw that there, there was a surplus this year, it was like two point five was coming from vacancies, which I'm assuming was from the actual. Below the sixty five. And then we had another five hundred and twelve thousand dollars that also some R C M P vacancies. What was that? And what's on that? So.
So, um, I think the, the, if we're talking about the quarterly without.
Yeah.
Back at it, the five hundred and twelve with is would be. The staff within the city in emergency services, which is not part of the contract.
So if I understand you correctly, because if I understood you correctly. Then the money that's going into the reserve, like this year, we had to put up an extra two hundred thousand that went out the tax bases. No one has topped up for next year. So we don't have more. Then we would be taking off two hundred thousand dollars off the tax base because we wouldn't need to put any more into the reserve, right? Am I reading it correctly? Or?
I don't think we increased taxes to be able to top up the reserve to, to the eight officers. We would just use a surp, if the surplus will, will top it up.
If there's a surplus um, at the end year with the contract. And we, we would then look to see if there was uh, we need to top up the reserve. We don't budget for a annual transfer.
Into that reserve.
Into the reserve, yeah.
Okay.
Problem we don't ever be if we ever got seventy five officers.
Right.
And you would have to.
Really fill it up.
We'd have to pull from the reserve.
And then try to fill it up.
Yeah. But we would likely fill it up just through surpluses though, um, not through an actual um, charge to the taxpayers to top up the reserve. Like we would do it through future years surpluses.
And the reason you're asking probably what the last quarterly variance was.
Yeah.
It's a little bit larger than the sixty two versus the sixty five because it's actually. Like annualization from prior years building and officers. There's a bit of a time lag there too. So there's a bit of an adjustment that you can't calculate. It's exactly six, three officers for that given year. There's a bit of a timing. Based on the prior year billing adjustment.
So with this surplus this year, we should expect to see. Um, an allocation towards the reserve, the policing reserve as one of the recommendations. And then. I'm just going to guess it's going to go to stabilization. The rest, considering that we have a huge amount.
It'll be.
Yeah. So we actually just do that top up to the R C M P reserve. We don't actually get council approval on that because it's in policy. So we just do the calculation. Before we even bring you the surplus, it will have already had that taken out of there.
That's why I never saw it.
It would be so miniscule. There, there are years when it is five thousand. Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's really smart.
Okay, I understand now. Thank you. I don't have any other questions. Okay.
I have that question. That's scary. I actually thought.
You got one, Mike?
Right, Mike, go ahead.
Um, just to follow on to the mayor's question because she did steal my question.
Uh, does that?
And on the, on the two percent versus the five percent, I. Could, I tried to kind of build my own little spreadsheet to say all of the other. Reserves to get from two up to close to five. I, I could not. Add up enough of the other reserves that to, to get us close to five. Have, have you guys done that? Math?
That is a good question. It was more of a philosophy that we wanted to implement as a phased in approach to have this minimum balance so that. If we said, okay, if we approved it, that we wouldn't instantly in the first year need a reserve transfer to top it up. So we wanted, it's likely something we're going to review and increase as we modify. In future policy reviews, but we wanted this to kind of be a phased in approach. To kind of be a more palatable increase, but we also considered it based on the R C M P and the risk insurance reserve. So. We did take into consideration that in the two percent, but it is likely something that we'll be looking to increase in future years.
Do, do we know what that number is? Like it's two plus another. You know, one from everything, all the other reserves that were actually sitting at a total reserve of three. Versus other municipalities sitting at a total reserve of five. Do we know that?
It was more, it'd be probably more closer to that.
Yeah.
Three that we'd be looking at in the future, but we wanted to be considerate that we were different than other municipalities because we did have those two other reserves. That would be classified as probably a stabilization.
And, and.
Like the art. China is trying to compare apples to apples. So.
Yeah.
Our, our three reserves don't want to get us. To three percent versus all other municipalities are sitting at five.
I think that's the one thing is when we're doing the research was not every municipality was the same.
Right.
And, and so to make that comparison of some municipalities have two reserves. And by fifty million in reserve, right? As opposed to. Us only, we have most, we have reserve for almost everything, but. They're very specific in what they can be used for, right? So, yeah, so I. Are we closer to the five? It's probably. I think we eventually would get there, but. Yeah, that, that's what I would say.
I think. You know, the safety of having reserves in a. Uncertain future, whether it be environmental impacts or inflation or, or. I, I don't know. Other governments around us uh, impacting our, you know, financial. Downloading or et cetera, et cetera. Could. When I, when I did the math, I, I thought, why aren't we at five in total? Benchmark. We did all that work to benchmark, but. If, like, when, when would we? Get to what everybody else is saying is best. Best practices. And I know dollar numbers, total dollar numbers is one thing, but percentages are in this case probably more applicable.
Did we, and those are all great points and reasons why we're implementing the minimum um, balance. But yeah, you're right, correct. We would probably move towards increasing that. We just wanted it to be a kind of a more palatable first step. To introducing this concept.
So you, okay, uh, so you see in future years, you would come back and say, you know, what our reserve at two is. Too low or. Is that an annual basis review or?
We would probably bring the policy as needed. Um, we'd follow the corporate policy schedule uh, in terms of review, but if something was. Needed. Council attention right away. It's something great for.
Okay. Okay, I got it. The other one was um. Uh, on the red line version, we, we struck out, I think it's page sixty. Um, and it, we took out the work, the fire buildings. Um, is that because we now include them in? Infrastructure under the big umbrella of infrastructure?
That's right.
Okay. It's just a simple language clarification. Okay, good. Good. I think that's it.
Why say? Thank you. Back to page forty five where you're putting the um, for risk analogy, I guess, the ceiling from three point five to ten percent. How did you, how did you choose the ten percent? Like that's quite a jump from three point five to ten.
Just looking at our comparators, um. Everyone seemed to have within that ballpark of a ceiling. Um, that's just how we chose it. The three and a half, the ten, it does seem like a big jump in that. Part of the kind of phased approach and uh, to review to see if that's what we need, but we felt ten was based off what everyone else had as a ceiling and seemed to be. A reasonable number.
And another factor was that a lot of municipalities didn't have ceilings. So that was why we. Were leaning towards a more significant jump is instead of the removal of a ceiling, it would be to kind of increase at a larger rate. Based on that um, disaster expectation and.
And that's comparable sized cities with comparable operating everything. There's no discussion of anything in between three point five and ten then?
It wasn't.
If I can just jump in and out, if you think about it though as well, ten percent is not even one month's worth of our operating budget, right? So if something, if something catastrophic happened, that doesn't even cover us for a month. Right? So it's really not that significant in, in, you know, if there was a big catastrophic event and, and as they had mentioned, there's no requirement. Um, to use your answer plus to top it up all the way to ten percent. We have the ability to. Um, but there'll be a requirement to keep it at the minimum if, if it's under that, but there's no requirement to actually go up to the ten. That will be a discussion. Obviously administration would make recommendations and council could have that discussion if they want to. Put more, you know, get, get closer to the five percent. So even if you have a minimum of, of two. Um, council could choose to, to try and keep it more around the five percent and, and put more of our year end surplus's um, into it. But no requirement to go up to the ten percent, but, but having only one month's operating um, expenses covered. Um, is actually pretty low. A lot, a lot of businesses operate on that three month um. Type of reserve for, for catastrophic events. Not so much municipalities, but even companies like will have, you know, that they can operate for three months.
And then you had asked for like our other means size municipalities comparator, what are their ceilings like? So city of Airdrie, Grand Prince, Strathcona all don't have ceilings. They just have the minimum balance. They don't have the maximum.
You're just putting the assurance with having a ceiling then, what you're saying.
I think from a financial sustainability perspective, like Diane alluded to, we'd probably remove it altogether.
And then I might be jumping ahead a little bit, but on page fifty seven where you're changing um, recreation to. Land and facilities for municipal use. Um, why did we take out recreation? Like, could it just be facilities for like office space or something instead or?
So holistically, we wanted to ensure that there's more of a um. Proper allocation or we can actually allocate the dollars to prioritize projects regardless of what they are. So we wanted to kind of make it more flexible. Understanding there's still the parkland reserve, which has the adherence to M G. So ensuring that we're balancing our adherence to standards.
So where it says municipal buildings, that could be a recreational building then? Why did we not just leave the recreational word in there?
Like where we wanted to.
Like where it says uh, to provide funds for the purchase of. And or development of land and facilities for municipal purposes. But it's got just landed facilities for municipal use, but none recreation is, you know, redlined out of it.
We wanted to make sure there's, it will include the recreational. We wanted to open up to all the facilities.
Recreational facilities that are owned by the city are all facilities, whereas the two policies that were before, one was specifically designated for. Like office buildings, things like that. Yeah, there was only other recreational buildings. So by just including that, that it could be used for any. Any city building, be it recreational, be it for office. So again, just opening it up to. Um, allow for the maximum flex- flexibility for what council seems to be the highest priorities.
As it's, as it sits right now, like if you would have had, say, five million dollars sitting in that recreational reserve. But what the city really needed and what council's priority was, was a new public works yard. We wouldn't be able to access that funding because it's specific to recreation. Whereas in another case could be the other way around. Maybe the recreational fund had no money in it and council's priority is to put something into recreation. We wouldn't be able to do that. So this just gives us more flexibility. That's just municipal facilities in general. Gives council the flexibility to use that money, whether it be rec or, or any other funds.
The fund could be used up on other things prior to recreation then could be all used up.
Well, I mean, that's totally at council's purview, right? And the council approves. Budget, right? Like it's not something we, we don't just use the money, right? It would be part of a. You know, our budget submissions and how we, and how we're proposing to fund, but it gives us more flexibility.
Thanks.
Okay, keep going.
Next policy, C F S nineteen taxation of vacant residential lands. Policy C F S nineteen is intended to allow for higher rates of taxation on serviced residential lots. Which have remained vacant and underdeveloped for a defined. Fine period. Updates include minor administrative changes to residential lot classifications. New zoning has been introduced to the city of St. Albert since policy development in the two thousand and fifteen tax year. Also new non-residential land uses have also been updated. Additionally, per the unadopted policy, the reverting to typical. Residential rates will occur in the year after physical construction commencing, moving to the next year. Next tax year will align with the assessor's physical condition date of December thirty first and creates less administration. And probability for error within the assessment and tax or the assessment and tax department.
Any questions on the vacant?
That was even Bannerman's online if there's questions.
It's below there, Kedaz. So what I'm just wondering then is, so are we collecting less money doing that then? Because we're not, we're waiting like it's going to be vacant for an extra year? Or how does that? Play out? If we're not, because if we're not changing the number till the following year. And it's going from vacant to a building, then wouldn't we be collecting less money? And that's because I'm wondering, let's say they build it and it's already January first or they, it's probably January first. So then that whole year they have it, they're paying taxes on a vacant land. And then they don't get billed into the following year. Is that what I'm hearing?
Through you, Madam Mayor, um, they know there is um, there's no effect. So what the, what this is, what the intent to do with this is just to. The proration within the tax year is the amount. So we would be budgeting based on the property being vacant and having the higher tax rate. And what the, the advantage to changing this right now is we only have fifteen properties on file. So we basically go through a quarterly inspection of each of these fifteen properties. And at that point, we'd just be doing it the once. For, and then that would align with our December thirty first physical condition date.
But the net amount of taxes, if it was built. The property was built, whatever, today or January first, the net amount of taxes collected for having a completed building would be the same?
Correct, yes. So this is, this, this vacant lands tax rate is only on vacant land. So once the property starts being improved, the tax class actually changes to improved. For the next year and that would just align with that. So the, the vacant lands tax rate only applies to just the land portion.
This is just really reducing staff workload, is what I'm hearing.
That's correct. Just a small administrative task that we look at fifteen properties four different times a year rather than just once.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Keep going. Who's next? Keep going.
Keep going. Okay, so um, other minor updates. The following policies have minor changes to wording, updates to pair, pair, comparators and references to other policy directives. Uh, administration has also updated the financial policies to that they will be reviewed in accordance with the corporate review schedule. Administration will bring forward any other major changes to minute financial policies as needed before their corporate review scheduling. So these policies are the C F S. Oh, for cash management, C F S eleven, operating and capital carryforwards and closed projects. Oh, for cash management, CFS eleven, operating and capital carry forwards and closed projects, CFS sixteen, municipal fees and charges. So um administration will review the following in twenty twenty five, the budget and taxation guiding principles. To review the application of prior year assessment growth revenue in in excess of the three point five tax. Tax increase um and update uh for reserve for affordable housing. Excellent. Um, it's just the recommendation uh standing committee um that the amendments to following council policies be provided as attachment. As attachments to December tenth. Twenty twenty four general report title, review of financial council policies be approved.
Okay, um. Is there any questions on those minor ones at the end there? See none.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Mike, I missed you.
Yeah, um. So we're we're striking on the carry for amounts. Um, I think it's on page ninety two. We're we're striking out. That these carryover projects are. Can can go on for extended periods of time. I think that capital for struck out all the. Says any capital project not been completed within four years. Carry forward, so. Cancel the project, basically, if it just carries over. We're striking that out and there's not going to be any. In control of council carryovers can go un unlimited.
Keep in mind, council's approving all of the carryforwards annually. So every operating carry forward, even the extension of capital carry forwards is an annual process that council approvals every year.
And operating?
Yes.
So that's why it's starting.
Yes.
So he struck it out.
It's a newly.
This by getting rid of it, it doesn't. Strike out the annual.
Exactly.
Okay.
Let's say, and just as probably some background to that, just from my experience here. We have never canceled a capital project. I mean, that like quite often capital projects go for multiple years, council has never stopped one. So it seemed weird to have it in the policy to say that every year we have to assess whether to recommend it be canceled. Because generally they've started, they're in progress, and for whatever reason, they may could be delayed and take a longer period of time. Um, so it's just, it's never happened. So it seemed kind of strange by council like like I mentioned. Um, has that ability to look at every project before we bring to carry it forward.
Yeah, my my question was purely that by getting rid of this, it doesn't labor right. The annual carry for review, so we we do it at year end. Okay, good, thank you very much.
Question, Cap. Go ahead.
Sorry, fair. Uh, I I just, I have no big issues, thank you, and I'm I'm just. Wondering, I mean, I know it says here that um administration is required by policy to review. The council financial policies on a regular basis. That seems to be broad, is it? Is there something in our that says annually or every three years or every five years? Is there anything that requires, so going forward, rather than. Have this massive, big, huge process that's, you know, in front, is there any need that actually put it in our? Kind of, it's used to say that this is reviewed every three year one, because right now it just seems vague, regular basis.
I know maybe I can pass that to Marty. We're trying to make the review of policies across the city more consistent, so like.
Yes. In an administrative directive that will make it so that we have to review our policies on a rolling basis, but they will have to be looked at once every five years. Um. The problem with putting it in a council policy is if is if we don't follow it, then we're not following a council policy. So the the actual reality is we change the policies and administrative directives as needed and we prioritize them. So if something happens, like Stan alluded to earlier. That's a requirement to change something, we will bring it forward in advance of that schedule. Um, but we, it on the administrative side, there is a requirement administratively to review every five years. So we prefer. Um, as we're updating our policies now, to take it out of the policy language in the policies and put it in the administrative direct level to direct administration to do that review. On that basis.
I'm just looking at when my did my scan of what other municipalities are doing, it they actually specifically identify a term. So I I understand if if you're saying that that creates a challenge, I just. I just worry, not I worry, I mean, I just saw that we went through a lot. Some of it was housekeeping, some of it was around what's best practices. And it is five years too long to identify what best practices are. I don't know, I'm just, that's a question I'm asking everybody's.
Don't think it is too long. That's a pretty pretty standard, at least on the legal side. We say we'll kind of at least once every five years, but.
All right. I mean, as long, I mean, I I as long as it's been captured somewhere, that. Just it seems like. There was a lot of catching up to do on this particular one.
But and to your point, it's just this particular one, if you look at. Quite a while.
Well, some of them are.
Part of the reason is try and come up with a purple light, which some are some are are more germane than others, are more timely than others in the necessity. But as noted, the team is not bound by five years, right? As they identify issues, they would.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I see Natalie's got her hand up, so I'll just end and I'll just end with this kind of thing. I don't, I don't think a lot of people have a really good understanding of why we have reserves and what they're used for, whether they're general reserves, whether they're specifically. I mean, any government, I mean, senior levels of government, but I don't, I think that a lot of our residents see that we've got this massive big pot of money. And they don't understand what it's actually really truly means and how it can be applied, what it's specifically for. Whether it's for emergencies or whether it's for other things. So I I mean. I just think something like this is important, and I think perhaps this is more of a comment and debate, but it's more that. We need, we don't do a good enough job actually selling what these things are.
You may have just given us the topic for our next finance video. Oh, truly, right, that perhaps that's a.
Anyways, that's my thoughts, sorry.
No, and I was just thinking, Kenneth, and as you guys were answering the question, so if we don't do it in the term that's described in the policy, then you're upside with the council policy. But if it's not in the council policy and it's in an admin directive, the council has no way to. Um, know when when the next update's coming or if it had been done in the last five years, because I'm trying to figure, last time we did. Oh, five budget guiding principles. It's like it's been forever since we've looked at that one.
We got really behind like when we went into.
Yeah.
Honestly, we got really kind of off skid that, and we also know there's a lot more significant changes we want to make in that policy, which is why we didn't bring it forward this time.
Yeah, okay, that's my favorite policy. I'm kidding, it's actually a policy, but I'm just, so there's nothing to. I guess hold you account to the review of these policies and.
Will be account ultimately.
But I but I wouldn't go through all the policies and when was the last time we did this, but if it was in the policy, you could see red dots last reviewed.
I think all the policies, don't they have the last review date, right?
Are you, so you're not taking that out?
No.
Okay, okay.
What we're really proposing is if you want to do is have a schedule so that rolling review happening every year as opposed to a big massive amount.
Yeah, the rolling is good, like this was enough for today.
It's more than.
Okay, and this is, this is just a financial policy, right?
Yeah.
The scope, right? There's a number out there that have been reviewed a lot as well.
So going to, are we getting of um budget guiding principles in this before the end of this term?
Um, we're looking to bring that one back. We will have some adjustments. Um, we're looking at it second quarter. Okay, please.
On the cap list, uh, Council Jolly.
Uh, thank you. So I I just have a process question for today. So. Mayor, I'm I'm happy to kind of bring this forward, but it it look, I know Council Hughes for sure has one amendment. So I I'm just curious about kind of what that amendment is or if we're looking at other amendments as well and and how. Marty would like us to do that.
So I was thinking, why don't we make a motion? That says essentially this to recommend a council, but take return did you want was reserves.
Growth stabilization.
Which was in the reserve policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we could re we could represent, we could make a motion for two, four, eleven, sixteen and nineteen now.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Quick, get that out of the way, and then we can deal with the amendment.
We actually just discovered something on FS nineteen as well as that the the land use districts that are listed in that policy are based on the old land land use by law. So we need to amend them to the new district numbers if it says R one or two.
Okay, so Council Jolly, can you make a motion that says what's on the screen for two, four, eleven and sixteen?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh.
So moved by Natalie.
And and nineteen or no?
No, 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 that's the one they want. Did you guys get that? Just making sure. Hey. You guys are good back there? Cheryl?
Okay.
Council Hughes, is that adjustment that you're asking, that's in budget and taxation guiding principles? It's not in.
No, it is in the reserve.
Yeah.
It's there's a line you've crossed out. But it does tie, the problem is, is it does tie to budget taxation guiding principles, so I'm like, um.
Deal with that separately. Um. So i- if we've got that, I'll accept the motion. Natalie, do you have anything to add to that debate? Okay, anyone else?
Thanks.
Okay, all right, let's call for the vote on those few, get them out of the way. That one's carried unanimously. Okay, let's go to nineteen, the taxation on vacant residential lands. Could we? Make a motion that says pretty much that as amended? And then when you bring it to council, it'll have.
With with new land use by law.
Committee can direct administration, think that ultimately end up in council part. It just take direction to the amendment and then bring it to council.
Straight to council.
The amended version will.
So what would the the standing committee whole recommend to council?
Say that administration shall or something?
Yeah, that you just direct us so that policy number, whatever it is. Nineteen be amended to, in this case.
Update the land.
Just strikes in accordance with the land use by law. We just, I we have it ready. I'm not sure if we're ready to set it up.
Okay, yeah, perfect. And then we'll go back to S O one.
Yeah.
The schedule six, but that's not that one.
You need, okay.
Okay.
I can do this.
Okay, um, and should it say? And bring to council or recommend to council?
Because it's not in its approved state until council does it. So administration will bring it as amended.
Okay, to council. As long as that's the understanding, Captain, I'm kind of moving that.
Yeah, so you want me to read it out or you want me to? CFS nineteen taxation of vacant residential lands be amended to convert the land use districts in accordance with land use by law eighteen twenty twenty four. And I apologize, actually, I saw R one in the thing here, like, it just.
Pretty amazing.
They went right over my head.
So and the other one, the other question I'm saying, so that means you're just updating the districts and not the other changes that finance had recommended. Should we add in there and?
What you're saying amended. So like.
It just says it makes to convert the land use districts, but there was some other changes that you guys had.
No.
It was small.
Like, does that negate the ones that we?
Oh, right.
Proposing?
Okay, but it's amending what's been presented to you, so those other changes are still.
Okay, and then. And then we'll make that other motion to go.
To the reserve.
Separate.
No, because this is not making the changes that they recommended.
Well, I just don't want to make, I just don't want to cancel this out.
Was that their changes, they may be presented as presented, be amended as presented to convert the land. Um, the end of the day, the changes they recommended, you've not told us to change them, so they're great forward, right? So we would only change the land use district on top of those to make it current.
That's right. And then the final motion will say that we uh we're. Recommending to council that the amendments that we propose as administration are approved as amended by you, like.
There'll be another motion coming.
There'll be another motion coming to send this to council as a. But I just misunderstood. There are no other changes to CFS nineteen besides the reclassification of the land use. What we presented, but nothing that came out of the discussion.
No, we just want to make sure that we capture ones that were presented today, plus the ones you caught today, all in one.
Yeah.
Okay, so is this going to be another motion after this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like today or?
Yeah.
Yes. We have to vote on this one.
This one.
Oh, who made this one?
I did.
Yeah, your name's already there. Okay, go ahead. You don't have to read this, you already did.
You did.
There it already says carried unanimously, so. Natalie, you're good?
Hi.
Okay, there you go. Now, what's the second motion?
So. Let's just ask, uh, because I know it's tied to the policies, so.
And find it.
Is the policy.
She said page sixty four.
Yeah, it's on page sixty four for the reserve, which is that the annualization impact of prior years operating business cases. Was coming out of the growth stabilization reserve before.
Bullet.
Yeah. Um. But was this removed from the policies as well?
True, budget guiding principles, that one. I'm just looking.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So when you bring these recommendations forward, is there going to be a background or, because the one. I'd support this move, by the way, but I don't know why you took it out in the first place.
If I'm reading this correctly, if I go to the budget taxation guiding principles policy. That little thing in the reserve policy is actually in contradiction to what's in the in the guiding rules policy. Um, because it just says in that policy, it just says. A budget to transfer to the growth stabilization reserve will be included as part of the base budget to recognize the prior year's assessment growth, so it has no reference to. So the less annualization impact is not in. Not in the budget and taxation one. I I don't even remember how.
The conversation that we had internally when we talked about this was that the accounting of that and the actual tracking of that. Um, would would be would require a lot of administration time. So I think the adjustment of the assessment growth to the base would account for those. Like F Ts in the full year and the next year. So I think internally, when we had the discussion in finance, it was like, that's happening to account for that inflationary item. So that's why we had recommended to remove it, because it would have, it would then then be to then. Do the adjustment to apply the assessment growth year over year to that next year's um would just be. Would require a lot of administration in time, so we thought. In lieu of that, we could just do that base transfer and apply that assessment go to account for those increases. But council is, that is something that we could, if council wants to uh. Track the assessment growth and apply those increases to those year over year increases from the approved business cases. That's always something in your, in the committees um purring to to direct us on. Because if, because if let's say this was to stay in, then the next step would be, and either way, would be to talk about the financial policies to have it reflect this, correct? So.
The other policy.
We have to, we look at them and provide a recommendation with both of them in tandem, so they're not just one another.
We probably want to have a much bigger conversation around the whole concept again of that growth stabilization reserve and the amounts like, so there'll probably be a lot of components of that. If this is one of the components, we certainly talk about.
What I'm hearing is that you would like this to be another submission that we could debate in January.
No, what I'm hearing is that leave it as is.
Yeah.
Leave this in, so you strike it out. What, and then, so now we actually have. Um, the reserve policy aligned with the budget guiding principles policy. And then when they bring the budget guiding principles policy, which as you said, coming this year.
Before next year's budget.
We have a broader discussion on the growth stabilization reserve.
Right.
We, any changes we make there, we would then quickly reflect in this reserve.
Yeah, and even com- committee can recommend that, we review that as part of it.
I I and I'm I'm okay with that. I'm just thinking. I don't even have a problem putting it as an N O M, just have an actual discussion about this specifically, like earlier than the Q two, if necessary.
Um, but it feel like it might be more beneficial to have it as part of a bigger discussion around the growth, because that's just one little like tiny component of it, right?
Big component. We'll get it done before next budget though. Is this on our cap list, do you know? Budget going to be.
No, not yet.
Yeah.
Can we add that show? Okay, Q two, I heard.
Yes, I really do want to have this discussion, so.
I just don't think today's the day for the discussion without seeing the other policy in front of us.
It just might have consequences to other things that you might want to look at. I guess that's my only concern. I mean, we could make happen whatever council wishes, but.
But I I I know what you're saying is I'd like to put this in the other.
Yeah, I'd like to have all the growth actually applied towards the growth and the just and just so council understands that this. We only have twenty five percent actually coming off the taxes from well growth to beneficial. And by not doing this, it's reduced to ten percent, because fifteen percent is going for staffing that we approved, that is not being attributed in the next year's first stabilization. Which makes it the actual tax increase decreases from growth is ten percent. Is the real, the real number now, if if this is not modified. And that's why I'm so eager to make sure that it is actually discussed. Um, and then if you really look at the fact that there's other costs increased to growth, like new buildings, et cetera. Um, that involves extra debt, but the the reality is at this current rate, that growth actually costs the taxpayers more money. When you look at the full picture, but there's no benefit.
When you look at the full picture, but there's no benefit from a taxation point of view to actually have growth this moment with the way we have it proven set up. So I'd really like to see this discussed. But I will withdraw it because of the fact that we will be discussing it. And I will trust that we will have a very wholesome discussion. I don't, you love it, let us forget.
So. Guaranteed, I mean, if you, if you want to make a motion for your, your peace of mind, a notice of motion to make sure that it's brought back, that, that, that's fine, but commit it, it could be part of the discussion.
No, I'll just look at the capitalist next week. And, uh, I look forward to seeing.
One of the one things I was just, uh, chatting with Mr. Fletcher is that, you know, we may have the ability to um, accomplish what you're trying to accomplish, because I know exactly what you're trying to say, but in a, in a much more straightforward, easier manner, like, because I understand what they're talking about, trying to like, keep this, the track of this stuff is, it's actually quite complicated and we might be able to come up with a more straightforward solution that's still, um, it's like what you're trying to achieve, because I.
Like, if, if we just reduce the target to something else to recognize that we need to increase it for the.
It might be something simple, might be something.
Would also.
We'd have to do some research and some number crunching and stuff, but there might be an easier way to accomplish it.
Okay.
So.
Okay, as long as it's on your radar and everyone, I feel it's on everyone's radar now. So I will withdraw and we won't debate it. And thank you for all that info.
Just wanted to proceed it in, now, mayor, we pulled that one off of.
Yeah.
The original, so we're gonna.
Yeah, we're gonna have to make the motion. Yeah.
Yeah.
For the last two remaining policies.
Yes.
Nineteen.
Yeah.
Nineteen is amended because we're going to be changing. The bylaws.
Yep.
There, we captured it all. Okay. You want to do that one, Wes?
Standing committee of the whole recommended counsel that amendments to the following council policy provided as attachment to the report entitled Review of Financial Council Policies dated December tenth, twenty twenty four be approved. C F S O one, financial reserves, C F S nineteen taxation of vacant residential lands as amended.
Okay. Anything further on that, Wes?
Uh, no matter.
Call for the vote. And that's unanimous. Good stuff, guys. Um, let's take a fifty minute break. How long is it? This last maybe.
I don't think it's any longer.
I think it's a little bit. They could.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I can make the motion right now if you want.
Just five minutes. I think this will be back.
For anyone who's still there, still there, I have to jet to go to a meeting. Danielle, good report.
Okay, we're back. Counsel Jolly had to leave. Um, we just have one more item. Which is Alberta fifty five plus games update, um, Anna Royer and also Danielle here. Go ahead.
Good morning, mayor and council. Thanks for having us here today to provide you an update. Um, I'm going to share my screen and with that, we'll have it turned over to, um, Ms. Royer's going to do a quick presentation for you. The chair?
Danielle.
Seriously, you know. From the beginning. How's that?
It's better.
It's coming.
It's coming.
There we go. There we go. Anna, off you go.
Good morning. Uh, I was, I was gonna say, almost say good afternoon. Yep, twelve oh one. Through the twenty twenty three budget deliberations, council directed administration to develop a bid for the twenty twenty seven Alberta fifty five plus summer games and to return to council prior to submission for final approval. Since the time of council direction, there have been changes to both the Alberta fifty five plus organization and the games program. The year twenty twenty twenty, two thousand twenty two was spent with many of us emerging hesitantly from COVID. Everyone is eager to renew old partnerships, develop new ones during the council presentations and from a survey completed in the summer of twenty twenty two, of which we received eighty eight responses from community groups and businesses, we heard the following. There was a desire post COVID to bring the community together and grow community connections. There was a desire for games or major event that would impact a number of nonprofits and to allow relationships to renew, renew and grow. There was interest in an event that promotes volunteerism through our local sport partners. And the community was looking for an opportunity to celebrate sport, art and culture through enriching social activities. Since council direction to develop a bid for the Alberta fifty five plus summer games, administration has been gathering information required to submit the bill. In the late spring of twenty twenty four, we were provided a bid deadline date of December thirty first of this year. More recently, at the end of October, provincial games organization reached out indicating that there had been significant changes to the game structure. The decision had been made to combine summer and winter games into one annual games effective with the twenty twenty seven games. There is no longer an Alberta fifty five plus summer games, which was the original games which council directed administration to submit a bid. The new combined format changes the mandatory events to be offered with a greater emphasis on passive events. These are events which take place in a social setting and require minimal physical exertion. For example, euchre, bridge, eight ball. Many of these, well, might, might be active. Many of these events do not have a corresponding local nonprofit who would promote and support local play. The number of mandatory events has increased to eighteen and the projected number of delegates has decreased, decreased to less than seven hundred. The initial delegate participation, which we were basing our budget on was eleven hundred participants. In addition, culture events such as crafts, creative writing, photography are no longer included in the required events. They would be in addition to the eighteen required events if we chose to offer them. The revised direction creates uncertainty as to whether or not the new format will meet council and the community goals and expectations of hosting a multi-sport games. The focus on passive activities does not encourage broad interest. It is not a strong mix of active and passive events. The community may not find this game is of broad interest due to the passive nature and very similar style events. Within the required events, there are five card game events, two pool table events. This may impact spectator interest. Investment is high for minimal impact with more events and less delegates. It is anticipated that the financial commitment required from the city will be up to a hundred and thirty thousand as opposed to the original thought of twenty to fifty thousand. That is, if we are only considering the eighteen mandatory events. The events that were removed included events that would draw larger, larger contingents such as slow pitch and pickleball. These are now optional events that again would be in addition to the eighteen required events. Also, there is no support financially from the provincial organization. The provincial organization is not under a government agency, but it's a separate standalone not-for-profit. Visibility in the community from the games activities will be minimal as activities mainly take place inside service place or community board rooms. This may impact our ability to find event sponsors for each event. The inclusion of culture events is now optional and with the number of events already increased, increased, there is a risk that they would be excluded, limiting the provision of a well-rounded games. The events now offered, for the most part, are social activities and do not have a sports governing body for partnerships. This may decrease involvement of our local nonprofits. With that said, uh, the recommendation is run of the standing committee of the whole as follows, uh, that administration discontinued work on and refrained from submitting a bid for the twenty twenty seven Alberta fifty five plus games. And again, it was important to note, the original direction was for a games that no longer exists. Uh, and number two, the administration research alternate events that may offer better alignment to council organizational priorities and hosting multi-sport games and return to council with findings and opportunities before the end of quarter two, twenty twenty five. Well, two more questions.
My only question is, what are our priorities in hosting multi-sport games?
That, that is, that is written part of the agenda report. We looked at doing a better, um, we don't have a hosting strategy per se, but we are looking at doing event strategy where we would include an event strategy in that. And so what we're looking at right now is, comes more from, I think I had it on about slide two, and it was more from, um, going back and looking at the survey, uh, the, of the businesses and the not-for-profits back in about twenty twenty two, when council first started talking about it. So they're looking for something for like broad interest that would, uh, create volunteer opportunities that would involve a number of non, the not-for-profit, uh, sporting groups um, that would utilize our facilities within the community and perhaps, um, maybe grow a few more facilities.
Thank you. Also, and council talked about gathering excitement and community kind of energy and connection was really, um, a piece of the equation as well. And that's something that we've kind of pulled from the M D P and some of our some community wellbeing and social connection within our community. So really leveraging on that as well.
Do you think, um, Special Olympics would fit that? Because that would, it's always been my first choice.
Yeah.
Remember we did the winter in a.
Yeah. So we have, um, we have, what games and, and Mo, ultimately, you know, Mo has done a lot of work on this. We've looked at, uh, potential events that are coming up and one is the twenty twenty nine us, uh, Alberta Special Olympics. Um, and we definitely feel that was, would be one if council does directives to come back, that certainly will be one. The other two that we have had some discussion with the provincial body is the Alberta summer, uh, the twenty twenty eight summer and winter Alberta games. So we have looked at that and, and Mo has had discussions as well, provincial office.
We've got three that we've kind of got eyes on that we would bring back to you for consideration as well as any others, if we came up with any other opportunities. Um, goes back to you for Q two consideration.
They have a pretty good Special Olympics, um.
Yeah.
Organization here in St. Albert, so I'm sure they would be excited. Uh, question, Shelley?
I don't have any questions. I'll just do the.
So this is a pretty massive change to go from like, we're doing sports to a playing card.
I know.
So like, it's like because watching people play cards is not as exciting as you think. I've seen no television programs.
Yeah.
Poker. Well, poker is a whole different situation than, we were not playing poker on these suckers. So, um, I'm just, did they indicate why they're making such a dramatic change?
You have. Uh, not specifically. We did ask a few questions about it and they did provide, again, there's probably about ten alternate sports or alternate activities. But, but not really, no. Um, and they really are like the card games. Um, we've got military whis, euchre, uh, what else? cribbage. Um.
I don't think we have a totally good sense of where they made that decision from. The organizers did reach out and inform us of the change and, and so we, um, through administration, we met with them and tried to understand a bit more, but they gave us fairly, um, uh, I'd say basic information that this was the change and I don't think we have total understanding in terms of why they've made that change.
Are the optional activities still intended to go forward, but it's because they know there's mandatory and optional, but are they actually trying to bring forward the optionals?
Um, we, we based our new budget because we are looking, if, if council does want us to continue forward and bid on this, we, we do have a bid package that's almost ready to go. Um, but we only focused on the eighteen mandatory, not the optional ones.
It's the event host opportunity and they get to select whether they choose to do the optional. So the optional is set by the organizer and then you as administration can choose whether to do those or not.
And how much should, how much grant were we expecting to get if we had, if they had given a grant? What are we looking?
It was low fifteen thousand.
Minimal. So that's what could do with the.
No. Um, with those other events, which we can bring back to you, Q two, there is other funding sources that come with those. Those are still under provincial mandates, a couple of them and the other. Um, so that's the Alberta summer and winter. And then with, um, the Special Olympics, there's also some funding sources. So what we'll do is bring back the full picture of what that looks like if you want to pursue those opportunities as well.
I'll have a glass. Thank you.
Any more questions? Wanted to make a motion. You go with you, Shelley. Okay, go ahead.
Let's read what Anna just mentioned to me. Um, that administration discontinued work and refrained from submitting a bid for the twenty twenty seven Alberta fifty five plus games and to that administration research alternative events that may offer better alignment to council and organizational priorities in hosting multi-sport games return to council with findings and opportunities before the end of quarter two, twenty twenty five.
All right, any comments on that?
Uh, and I've just, you know, wish you luck in finding something that's, uh, you know, a little bit more exciting. I'm sure a lot of the groups now, like, you know, pickleball, for example, they have Canada and Alberta, they're all doing their own thing, but it's, it's, that's probably why the five change some. Good luck in finding something exciting for us.
Okay.
Take call for the vote. That one carries unanimously with counsel Jolly absent. And that. And that. There is a, there was one motion that had to get read.
I had an, an I R.
Maybe that was there.
Forward. Have to just.
Is it just one I R?
Yeah. Of course, I had it, but I mean, dear Lord. You don't have it with you, do you, by chance? I'll put it up on the screen. I'm trying to remember what it was, but I can try to find it. Give me a second here.
I'll find it.
I just lied to you on the screen. Thank you, because I totally forgot what I was going to say. Please provide specific examples in our M D P states that growth from not a bird in north and would be of an administrative recommendation not to prove development. I'm just looking for clarity in that.
All right, any announcements? See none, we are adjourned at twelve thirteen.
That was my year to win cribbage from Alberta.